We'll call the meeting of the Fayette County School Corporation Board of School Trustees Business Meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, August 8, 2017, and it is 7:00 PM. And we will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will start by asking for a motion to approve the agenda as submitted and amended.
I so move.
Thank you, Anne. A second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Any patron comments on agenda items? Seeing nothing, we'll move on. And now on to the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes from regular business meeting of 7/11/17, personnel report, retirements, resignations, leads of absence, et cetera, the approval of the July 2018 claim, 2017 claims? 2017 claims, things that were not in 18 yet, number 47095 to 47291, the appointment of the Deputy Treasurer, and the Connerville Gymnastics request for Sunday AM gym events. So that being said, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Andy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Now we'll move on to action items. Personnel report, recommendations for employment, Mr. Serqua.
Thank you. Okay, have a pretty good list, so bear with me. Recommendations for certified staff, Sarah Booker, elementary teacher at Eastview, Satchko Kaukugo, Japanese teacher at CHS, Nicolette Davis, elementary teacher at Maplewood, Amy Merlissina, elementary teacher at Everton, Linda Shepherd, elementary teacher at Fayette Central, Michelle Shun, special ed teacher at Connersville High School, McCully Vessels, fax teacher at Connersville High School, and Nancy Witt, elementary teacher at Maplewood. Classified staff, Emily Allen, Title I, education assistant at Grandview, Diana Baldwin, a bus aide, Valerie Crouch, special ed assistant at Fayette Central, Marilyn Day, nutrition bus assistant at Eastview, Melody Evans, special ed assistant at Everton, Mary Fields, a bus aide, Michelle Homeland, special ed assistant at Connersville Middle School, April Huey, nutrition bus assistant at Eastview, Kaylee Keesling, life skills education assistant at Connersville Middle School, Thad Lewis, Title I, education assistant at Maplewood, Bailey Moffett, education assistant at Magic Moments, Sarah Merida, special ed assistant at Fayette Central, Jamie Messer, special ed assistant at Connersville High School, Megan Knobby, education assistant at Eastview, Brooke Pentecost, special ed assistant at Connersville High School, Sarah Raznick, bus assistant at, well, a bus assistant. Angel Rose, education assistant at Grandview, Tamara Sheldon, bus aide, April Shipley, a bus aide, Cassandra Smith, education assistant at Maplewood, Von Smith, nutrition bus assistant at Magic Moments, Lindsay Wood, Title I, education assistant at Eastview, extra cricket coach, Rochelle Burkhead, PE department chair at Connersville Middle School, and Robert Chad House, assistant football coach, Connersville Middle School.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion for the personnel report.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori. A second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion?
Mike, what number of periods is Satchko teaching?
Two.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we'll go on to permission to advertise for capital projects hearing and bus replacement plan hearing at Calum College.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. I'm requesting permission to advertise the capital project plan and the bus replacement plan notice. These are a requirement of the Department of Local Government Finance. Annually, would these be published in the newspaper? We used to have to publish the budget, however, that is now advertised through Gateway, so it's available for public inspection online instead of in the newspaper. I certainly hope this request is gratuitous in that if you do not approve it, we will not get a capital projects plan or bus replacement budget approved. So, there we are.
No pressure.
Yeah, that could be problematic.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion for this capital projects hearing and bus replacement plan hearing.
I'll second.
Wait, did somebody make the motion?
You did.
I'm asking for a motion.
Oh, then I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second that.
Sorry for my language, thank you, Warren. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And on to you, Ms. Calum Tolliver, for the corporate authorization resolutions.
Thank you, again, Mrs. Jacobs. As you're probably aware, if you've done any banking updates, now there are several requirements with homeland security, and corporate resolutions are required anytime there's a change. We have experienced some change in our staff. Mrs. Crissaro came to central office mid-year, Mrs. Riley, Raleigh, retired mid-year, and that creates some timing complications with having to have this and being able to process those extracurricular checks. So we're requesting that my name be added as a signatory on all of those extracurricular accounts, so when you have an interim administrator, we would not have to go through this whole process to get them to sign the checks. The extracurricular treasurer, secretary in the building, and myself would be able to negotiate those until we had a permanent placement. So these corporate authorizations bring us up to date. We'll communicate all of these to the various banks that they use, and this will help us have fluid business operations.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion for the corporate authorization resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, on to the affirmation of the 2018 Support Staff Employee of the Year, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Ms. Jacob, for the board. Yesterday, we were able to surprise Darlene Sumen, who has been a longtime employee for us. She has completed 21 years. This is her 22nd year she's starting, and she is a secretary at Fayette Central, and I'd have to say she was surprised, touched. I think her son, Derek, was just as, just as surprised.
Yes, and he's excited.
But I think the staff was still on cloud nine for her today, just ecstatic for her. So I am submitting to you the affirmation of Darlene as our 2018 Support Staff Employee of the Year, and we also attach the nomination summary for Darlene Sumen.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to entertain a motion for the affirmation of Darlene as employee of the Support Employee of the Year. Thank you, Mark. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion?
Is that 2018 or 2017?
2017. It's 2017.
And that one's 2018.
No, it will be 2018, but the form was done in 2017. Yeah, we, just like the Teacher of the Year, we do operate, just like Tina Jacobic is technically the 2018, so that is correct. The form was dated 2017 on the other page.
Thank you for clarification.
Yes, please.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move back to Ms. Calum Tolliver for the adoption of the preliminary bond resolution. And do you want to include that? Oh, no, I guess we have to make two different ones, so.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. We have Brock Boucher and Caleb Moffett here from Albon Associates. They're assisting us with our bond issue. We have a couple of items this month that will need to be approved, and then again, next month, provided these are approved, we'll come back and approve some additional items for the actual sale of the bonds. But I'd like to let them make their presentation and speak to the bond issue process. What we're doing, as we've talked before, we have some smaller projects we're going to bundle together at different buildings, and these bonds will help keep our debt level consistent, where we've already discussed the importance of that before, so. Brock, thank you for being here.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity. As she mentioned, my name is Brock Boucher. With me is Caleb Moffett from Albon Associates. We're based out of Indianapolis, but our role is fiduciary, meaning we always have to act in our client's best interest in advisory. So we're not buying or selling any of the bonds that the school corporation would be selling. It's more advisory to assist the school corp to minimize interest rates and, of course, save as much money as possible on interest paid. So as we go through the presentation, the terminial here frequently are GO bonds or GO bonds, and those are what are referred to as general obligation bonds. These are a little bit different than what the school corporation has issued in the past as far as being lease rental bonds. So general obligation bonds, what that means is they're not collateralized by any type of asset or, excuse me, building space. So it does, it means that these bonds could be spent on any property in the school district because they're not collateralized by a certain piece of land or a certain building. So in that, the reason why investors like these types of bonds is because if they're not collateralized, they're backed by a full faith and guarantee that the school corporation will pay them back. So because of that, interest rates are, or have been, we've seen pretty low for these type of bond issues. Excuse me. So we'll go through the plan as we've worked with Mr. Collins and Ms. Calum Tolliver here, and talk about the timeline and the planned structure for these bonds as she begins preparing for the 2018 budget. So the process from here is, the first step is tonight. The next step will be the project hearing at the September 12 meeting. The planned bond sale is on October 10th, then don't get spooked out by this, but the bond sale, or excuse me, the bond closing will be then on Halloween. So this first, I'll call it the real slide of the presentation, it represents the existing outstanding debt for Fayette County School Corporation. If you could just trend there, 2017, to the right, you see that the current payment for the, from the debt service fund is approximately $1.8 million. Then beginning in 2018 and 2019, you see that the debt is decreasing from that point. This gives the school corporation, as Ms. Calum Tolliver mentioned, a lot of flexibility in addressing some capital needs here in the next couple of years. One thing I want to note, not included in these data are the 2013 pension bonds, since those are paid from a separate fund. We're focusing just on the debt service fund here for tonight's presentation. If you're anything like me, I always like seeing that visual representation of data, and this third slide represents the exact same information you just saw, just in graph form, and no different that you see the decreasing debt 2018 and 2019, and all existing debt for Fayette County Schools is paid off by budget year 2026. So again, a lot of opportunities, a lot of flexibility that Ms. Calum Tolliver and her team have developed here in preparing for some capital need investment. This slide here shows, as determined by the State of Indiana statutory requirement, when you think of GO bonds or GO bonds, there is a statutory limit that each municipality in the State of Indiana can issue. And that's derived from, in a formula designed, again, by the State of Indiana, you start with your net assessed value, and that top figure represents the 2017 certified net assessed value for Fayette County Schools. You divide by three, and then you multiply by 2%. For August 8, 2017, Fayette County Schools' GO bond limit is approximately $4.6 million. There's about $388,000 of outstanding pension bonds, which are viewed as GO bonds. So as of today, Fayette County Schools has a limit of approximately $4.2 million, as determined by the State of Indiana. So as we look at the options and working with your team, for a legal process, school corporations, as of today, can issue $2 million without having to go to any public vote. That just takes forward action. So the proposed GO bonds for 2017, $2 million issue, we've been working with Janie and her team, looking at a structure of a four-year, three-month repayment. That is a relatively short repayment schedule when you compare it to what the State of Indiana allows, is up to a 20-year repayment. So this is getting in and out of the market relatively quickly based upon what the State of Indiana may allow in total debt issuance. Looking at a $2 million GO bond with a four-year, three-year, excuse me, four-year, three-month repayment, it's going to cost approximately $150,000 in estimated interest over the life of that bond. Now, one key point, when you look at the $775,000 repayment, or max repayment, that represents compared to your existing debt schedule, but the intent and the target is not to go above the 2017 repayment schedule, and you'll see that here in a couple of slides. So as we continue to work with your team, we'll keep an eye on the feds and how they, whether they increase interest rates or not, but in our estimates and our calculation at this point, we are basing upon current interest rates plus 75 basis points, just because you never know what the feds are going to do between now and October. So hopefully, it will come in less than what you see in front of you, but just based upon our assumptions, this is what we'll assume for today. Looking at, based upon that interest rate, go back. One thing I should have mentioned is the net interest cost, or the NIC. You may hear that term from Janie and her team periodically, but we're assuming a net interest cost of approximately 2.6% in these estimates and these assumptions. Again, so a four-year repayment schedule, it's getting in and out pretty quickly, and 2.6 is a relatively low interest rate. So as we built the amortization schedule, you can see here in front of you, this is what the repayment schedule looks like, and how we developed it, working with your team, is wrapping it, meaning we wrapped it around the existing debt. So you can see that in 2020, 2021, you can see the increasing payments. However, because your current debt is falling off, as you saw in the coming years, we wrapped around the debt, so 2017 amount will not be surpassed. Okay? So if you, so you heard me refer to that $775,000 max repayment. If you follow January 15, 2022, and look right, you can see that figure represented right there. And again, you'll see on the next slide how that amount does not pass, surpass the 2017 amount. So now looking at this chart, this has two data points in it. The blue charts, or the blue columns, represent your outstanding existing debt, and I'll call it a yellowish-orange, or more of an orange color, represents the estimated repayment schedule based upon our assumed interest rates. So you can see 2018, 19, 20, 21 budget years are not assumed to surpass 2017 or be around the 2017 amount. So the intent, the goal, is to invest in capital needs, however, not extend the debt beyond current levels. So that's how we structured it, and that is our plan going forward. And having said all that, we welcome questions or comments.
You referred to the 2.6%. Is that the current interest rate?
That is current interest rates plus 75 basis points.
Okay, so that was my next question. The 75 basis points are in that 2.6?
That's correct. Yes, sir. Yep, yep. So the feds are meeting a couple of times between now and the bond sale, so again, you're never quite certain what they're going to do, so we built that in, making the assumption that this may be the worst-case scenario.
So the effective interest rate's going to be somewhere around 2.6, maybe a little higher, maybe a little less, depending on?
I would like to say that that's probably the ceiling.
Yeah.
From where you expect it to be.
Right, thank you.
So one thing to note, as Ms. Calum Tolliver and her team will be working on the 2018 budget, there will be an estimated debt service payment as part of that 2018 budget, to make certain she and her team can levy for that, again, beginning with the July 15, 2018 repayment.
It's already plugged in. I have the debt service budget built, so it's already plugged in for that estimate to include that.
And something else to make note of is that general obligation bonds are required to be competitively bid, so as we gear up toward October 10th sale date, we'll do some marketing of the bonds, we'll be contacting underwriters to generate that interest, again, no pun intended there, but generate the interest in the bonds, then we'll take bids that day, work with your team, and finalize, then we'll be able to report back on October 10th what the results are. We'll plan to see you back on September 12.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the documents presented this evening for your consideration, the first one is approving the issuance of the bonds. These documents were prepared by, or reviewed by, if you will, Ice Miller, who we have used previously for Bond Council. Jane Herndon is well-known, very well-respected, and these are the documents prepared. She will also be providing the documents for the September meeting, so these all meet the scrutiny of the attorney on the bond issue. In addition to that, Michelle Cooper, our local attorney, has been included in the communications on these, so everybody's on the same page, I believe. So the first item is the issuance of the bonds, approving the issuance of the bonds, the preliminary. The second one for your approval is where, in the event that we would need to spend money locally beforehand to move forward with some of these projects, it allows us to reimburse ourselves. So if we would make a payment out of capital projects, it allows us to reimburse the capital projects fund from the bond closing. This is required to be done in advance of that, so that's why it's being presented this evening instead of after, when money might really have been expended. So those are the two items for your consideration this evening.
All right, we'll take the first item, the adoption of the preliminary bond resolution, which is the issuance of the bonds. I'd like to ask for a motion.
I'll make that motion, Madam President.
Thank you, Warren. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Lori. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And now we will seek a motion for the adoption of the reimbursement resolution.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Andy. Do we have a second?
Chris.
Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. And thank you, gentlemen, for coming and sharing that with us. At this time, we can entertain any public comments. Persons wishing to make the board aware, suggestions, ideas, and/or comments may address the board at this time. Comments which involve personnel or students must be discussed in private. Seeing none, we will move on to report items. Start with the superintendent's discussion groups reports. Any committee reports?
I would like to share, the Fall ISBA conference is coming up. I believe Cindy notified you early October, I think October 2nd and 3rd. So if anyone would like to go, please let us know, and we'll get you signed up. It's a great time to network and to get out on the state level and...
Indianapolis?
It's in Indianapolis, yes. So just let Cindy know if you are interested, and we'd be happy to go with you and learn together, so.
All right, principal directors reports. Everybody up for these?
I just want to take this opportunity to invite you and our parents and students to our back-to-school open house tomorrow evening. It's from 5 to 6. At 5, where our seventh-grade parents and students will meet with their team of teachers and receive some information, and our eighth-grade parents can enjoy some hot dogs and chips and drinks in the cafeteria and meet and mingle with the teachers, and then we will trade that back. Eighth-grade students and parents can meet with their teachers. So we just invite you to come and walk around and meet some of our new staff and new students that are coming. Hope all of our parents and students can make it. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Any other principals or directors reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Director of Human Resources report, Mr. Serqua.
Thank you. Couple things. First of all, I'd like to report on our guest instructor program. We had our first meeting with potential candidates, I'll call them. We had 64 that signed up. Of that 64, 20 were returning subs who are now guest instructors, and so we're pretty happy with that. Over the next two weeks, we'll be interviewing those 64 to make sure they meet our criteria, and we'll put them on the list for guest instructors, and hopefully, that will be a big boost to that program. So I'm very, very happy with the success we've had so far in that program. Also, I'd just like to comment, as you noticed in the personnel report, we had eight new certified staff members. We added 24 non-certs, which is a lot. What we tried to do, to be honest, is to get the non-certs, or educational assistants, on board at the start of school. In years past, it may have taken us a week or so before that happened. We're pretty close to having, we are filled as far as instructors. Not going to wood right now, but educational assistants, we're within two or three. And I just want to comment on our staff around here, because it has been hectic in every area of the building, and they just did a super job of processing. Each one of these people that we hire takes about 15, 20 minutes to go through paperwork, to have them fill them out, do everything they need to do to be accredited for us to be able to put them to work. And it's just a great scene to see everybody pulling together around this office to get that accomplished. So I just want to thank them and let you know the work that they're doing. Thank you.
Director of Finance report, Janie.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. I just have a few thank yous I want to share. Our maintenance and custodial... Our maintenance and custodial team have really hit it hard this summer and done an outstanding job. And I've been in several of our buildings this week, and they just shine. And I think that, you know, sometimes those individuals are unsung heroes. When I left middle school this afternoon, we had to have some new electrical wiring run for two pieces of equipment that are going into the renovated area, and they were on it. And they said it may be 2 o'clock in the morning, but they'll text me when it's done. So, you know, great job to them. And so there are those to thank. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Miller and his team. Power School was implemented on a really short notice, and they have walked on water to get this done. It's still a learning process, and our people are learning, but we are going to have such an outstanding student information system, and I really appreciate what they've done because it's going to help all of us, so. And then, last but not least, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge my appreciation for Debbie Jobe and her years of service. She's been in the business office since 2006, sorry. But we joke, she's my left arm because she's left-handed, and I could not do what I do without her. And I hope if you see her before she leaves at the end of this month, you'll express your appreciation and gratitude for the support that she gives our students, too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Janie. Assistant Superintendent report, Kim.
Thank you. This evening, the first thing that I would like to talk about is we have a new requirement in which we must share out our staff evaluations in a public meeting before August 15. This is new for this year. So in your package, you will find each of the schools broken down in terms of teacher ratings from highly effective, effective, improvement needed, and ineffective. To summarize for the corporation, currently Fayette County Schools has 103 highly effective teachers. We have 131 effective teachers, and we have four teachers that are in the improvement needed category. So, and you can see in your packet where it's broken down by each individual school for further information on that. So that's what I'd like to share for that. Also want to acknowledge that our new teachers participated in the New Teacher Academy last week. We had 22 of our teachers. Of course, we're still hiring them, so a couple of them were not able to participate, but it was a great two days. It's a great group. I'm looking forward to the great things that they're going to do this year. Special thanks to the Chamber of Commerce. They hosted a lunch, a wonderful lunch, on Wednesday, in which they were able to pair our new teachers up with some business sponsors throughout the community. So it's a great way for them to get connected to people in our community and just have that connection as they enter Fayette County. Some of them were new, but there were several that are Fayette County graduates, and they're returning, so we're excited for them. And then lastly, want to compliment our CHS athletes for their participation in our fair booth this year. We changed it up a little bit, and it was cute to see them out trying to beat people at cornhole. So some of them did better than others, but it was a great week for, the weather was awesome, the kids participated. I think people really enjoyed seeing them out there, so it's great to showcase our kids because we have some great kids here at Fayette County. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Kim. You're welcome. Superintendent's report.
Well, they stole some of my thunder.
Uh-oh. That happens.
I think Mr. Miller is running on caffeine in his veins right now. But I want to echo that because, you know, one thing Terry said, his failure is not an option. And he's, he's going to do everything possible to make sure that Power School, the transition and, you know, and I look at that tech team and the stuff they do. They're behind the scenes, but, you know, David Way was in here, I don't know how many hours he put in in the last few days, just getting our servers going, and, you know, it's a big, we have a lot of technology in our district, and that's a big job. So all the folks, Phyllis, the whole team, Andrew, everyone, all the guys and Phyllis, they do such a great job keeping us going. And so they're the unsung heroes, like our maintenance and custodial teams. Our buildings look great and in good repair, and we don't have any new buildings, and I think that's a testament to the great work that our folks do. Debbie Jobe, if you'll recall, I was here, I was the HR guy, and it was just Tala and me there for close to a year. And Debbie and I jumped into finance, and neither one of us had any idea what we were doing. And we spent a lot of late-night hours trying to figure our way through it. And so I want to commend Debbie Jobe and her dedication. She's a great lady, and she's going to be missed greatly here. We have great replacement, Tom Jurgensen's doing a great job, but she takes a lot of knowledge with her, just like Penny did at the high school. So I'm stressing that. Janie on that person, but we'll be good. We have a great finance director who's going to make sure, so. I was overwhelmed with our back-to-school meeting yesterday. I want to thank all of our buildings. You overwhelm me with what you all pulled off. I was awake all night thinking this could be a big flop.
And then Randy got up and danced. And it all came out.
That's on video, too, by the way. And so is Mark Beard on video, cheering with Mike Cirque. No, but I think when the CHS staff marched in offstage playing the fight song, wow. And I was in three different buildings today, and the game is on for next year. Grandview is going down, they already told me, so. But I think the spirit, the, I've never been a part of anything that big. I did this in my last job with different things like this, but I just want to commend our staff. I think there's really great energy going here in our district, and I love that. And I want to commend Mike and his team, and 26 teachers we have hired. And I think we got a good group of teachers coming in, outstanding. And, you know, sometimes you hear, you hire some folks, we're scrambling, and I shared this with you in different communication, but it's becoming very much a free agent market out there in the world of education. And I think that's what our state has created. I don't believe that was a true intent of our legislators, to create this free agent market that we're experiencing, but districts are throwing money. There's no salary scheduling where it's just arranged, and they're throwing a few extra thousand dollars at people and saying, "Come work for us." And it's a real issue, and, you know, we've got to find ways to keep looking at our teacher compensation and benefits. But I think we got a great group, and I think the folks we hired here at the last minute, we hired four outstanding teachers. So I feel very fortunate that they wanted to come here. So I'm really excited. I can't wait. I won't sleep tonight. I'm so excited for this year. And one other commendation, we spent part of the evening and afternoon at transportation, but our transportation staff, they will be there late tonight getting things set up, so we are ready to go tomorrow. And I just commend our whole transportation team, getting our kids here safely. And I had no idea of what they were going through until we spent the afternoon and evening up there, and all four of us and the central ones were down there. What do we need to do? And we're probably in their way more than we tell them at times, but I just, I just say, it's a team effort, and I just think we've got great people. And I know you all know that, but I just want to acknowledge, we have great people in this district, and I'm ready to go. So thank you for your trust in me and in our team, and we're going to have a great year.
Thank you. Good to the cause. Anybody want to bring anything up?
I'd like to commend Scott. I've been at those meetings for 32 years, and usually they're at 8 o'clock in the morning, and I'm barely awake, and saying, "Why can't I get in my classroom?" And the whole attitude, and it was like a pep rally yesterday. And there were no pie charts, there was no data. It was about kids. And that was so refreshing to have that, because I think we're all pie-chatted and dated out. Children are so much more than their test scores, and there were no test scores mentioned yesterday. Joe Daniels, who defied all the odds, and is just such a fine young man, and his testimony of, it was the people, it wasn't the stuff. It was the teachers that made the connections. And that's why we got into teaching to begin with, was to make those kinds of connections. And I think sometimes it can get lost in a pile of data-driven decisions, and it was just nice to have a child-driven decisions. And I think everybody really had a good time. And then he fed us ice cream. That was great.
I think Randy had a little too much fun, though. I don't know.
I don't know. I don't think any of us knew of his hidden talent. We're going to have to get the disco ball out.
That's true.
I think we were talking about the dancing, weren't we?
Well, no, I think it was Jennifer Cooley. Yeah. And according to her husband, she doesn't act that way. And her children will probably use the videotape of it for blackmail at some particular point in time.
Probably so.
That was good. Thanks.
Well, yes.
I just wanted to commend the FFA kids on Young McDonald's Farm. It was probably as clean and as nice as it's been in years. Gabe's doing a great job with those kids, and I think Randy probably could tell us, didn't he have a national qualifier this week, Randy?
Morgan.
Somebody near...
Yeah.
Where?
Morgan, where.
Okay. Like to compliment them.
State finalist in forage production, I believe, or state winner, yeah.
All right. You want to go to nationals?
Yeah.
And I want to compliment the administrative team for the back-to-school program change. Sometimes it's really good. I heard nothing but positive comments. And also, I thought the happiest thing I saw in the last week in the corporation was that we were committed to splitting those kindergarten classes and adding those two teachers, especially first grade, yeah, first grade. And if we have kindergarten at that critical level, I just, it's a no-brainer unless we're broke. That's the way I look at it. So I really commend the decision to do that.
Our K-1 numbers across the district are all very good, so we're in good shape in our minds.
Well, the class sizes are good. The numbers aren't as high as we'd like them for, but maybe tomorrow. Maybe tomorrow when we get them in their seats, so. Because they'll be those that'll just show up tomorrow. Yes, there will be. So.
Always are. Anything else? I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I like that motion.
Thanks, Warren. A second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are adjourned.
Don't forget.